Bridgette, you're muted.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll begin with roll call. So Director Larson. Director Bowler-Jack.
Yes, here.
Director Hoover.
Here.
And Director Morris.
Here.
Welcome. We'll go ahead and move along to welcoming our guests this evening. And Director Bowler-Jack's going to facilitate.
Let's start with our agreements. We come together in this place and we remember that we agree to stay engaged. We agree to experience discomfort and be vulnerable. We agree to speak our truth and we expect and accept non-closure. So as a round of getting to welcome our guests and be with one another, I'd like to invite each of us to say a word of appreciation or gratitude for something that you've seen in the district, in a school, in your own life. And I would like to express gratitude for the walk that I had around Caskey View the other day as they were getting ready to send their kids home with Chromebooks and chargers and everything they might need to work remotely. And appreciation of how hard the teachers and the staff worked together to get the kids ready. The kids were smiling. They were ready to work hard at home. And I just appreciated what I saw in that building that day, even though it was a hard day. I saw them really pumping their kids up for another different experience. So I will call on Carly.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Director Bowler-Jack, for creating this space for us to share appreciation and gratitude. I'm really happy to be able to do that. Mine's a little bit long, sorry. Not super, but so I don't have to tell any of you guests or anyone that I can see how difficult it is right now, the space and time that we continue to find ourselves in as a nation, as a community, as a district. So coming out of the board in November, I, with really minimal exposure to the district operations, has been nothing short of information overload. And so I want to share appreciation and gratitude for Director Akpor Rider. So you have been such a strong support in guiding me and helping me navigate this newness. And so I'm so grateful for the time and energy that you've spent in phone conversations, just helping me stay, get on board and stay on board. I want to thank Director Larson for always making sure that I have the context and history that came up even just in our work group session. I'm so grateful for that because there's just so much that I don't know. And it's hard for me to even sometimes frame questions if I don't know some of the context. But I wanted to share also some gratitude for a teacher that I had the opportunity to have a really great conversation with a few weeks ago. So two weeks ago, I had the chance to go and connect with one of the amazing teachers at Thorndike Elementary, Courtney Martinez. And I was not only struck by her ability to navigate the nuance of the time that we're in, but also her capacity to see positive solutions and hold space for her peers, families and students. Courtney, thank you for being such a strong advocate for others, for showing up. I know that you're here on this call right now. And I know that you do that so that you can be a voice for everybody in the community that can't be here. So thank you for doing that. And I know that you always don't have the capacity to do it, but yet you still continue to show up. And so I'm so grateful for you for loving your community the way that you do and welcoming me into that. And then lastly, I want to share additional gratitude for the extra time and energy spent over these last two weeks, specifically to Dr. Herndon, to Ms. Core, to Ms. Maestro, Ms. Jones, and members of the board and every member of the community who showed up to do the hard work for our students last week and shared their public comment. That's Courtney, Carrie Jovita, Jennifer, Laura, Megan, Kimberly, Katie, Jennifer, Jenny, Andrea, Sohaila, Perian, sorry if I mispronounced that, Sonia, Erin, Jessica, Margaret, Emily, and a few others that I probably did this. Thank you so much for sharing your stories, for speaking up and for extending patience and grace as we continue to figure this all out. Thank you so much. And I'm going to pass it to Director Larson.
Thank you. I'm going to have kind of a similar thing. I guess, I mean, we all know we're going through a really challenging time, probably the most in certainly in the history that I've been involved with this district. So, you know, in times like these, it really requires several people in the testimony we've heard recently talk about it. Everybody pulling together and everybody working. So I just want to thank, you know, all the students, all the staff, all the families, all the community organizations, and even the state and federal legislatures that have sent us, you know, additional money to try and help out and get us through this difficult time. So yeah, I just want to, you know, this is, this is, we'll get through it. But it's a really challenging time. And I just want to thank everybody who's come together to help us get through this. Thanks. And see who's next. Director Morris.
Am I muted? I'd like to express my deep appreciation and respect for all members of the Tuaola School District. It's because of your integrity and never-ending dedication that the students, staff and community have been able to persevere through this really difficult time. You have and continue to make positive impacts on our students and our community. You are truly valued. Thank you for all you do. Doctor Apollo Ryan.
Thank you, Edna. So I'm talking to people in our community that might be tired right now, that are feeling exhausted, lots of stress, unappreciated, not listened to or acknowledged, maybe feeling invisible or dismissed. And I want you to know that you are important. And it's because of you that we are able together to serve thousands of students each day. We're able to serve thousands of families each day, and we're able to serve each, our colleagues and each other. And I value you. You're important. This is, I'd say, education is not only a vocation, it's an avocation, a calling. And just want to continue to acknowledge oftentimes there's folks out there that aren't feeling acknowledged. And, and you're so important. And so, thank you. All right. Thank you for Director Bowler-Jack for guiding us in a bit of a restorative circle this evening. We'll go ahead and move along to land acknowledgement. Think Director Larson, is that correct?
Okay. So we in the Tuaola School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duamish and Makoshu people, past, present and honor with gratitude to land itself and the Duamish and Makoshu tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land. And we recognize the Duamish and Makoshu people who have been living and working here since time immemorial.
As we pull up the agenda, I just want to welcome Mr. Fia Pito has joined us this evening to our student representative. What's that, Mr. Fia Pito? Were you saying something? Not sure. Okay, we'll move along. We'll hopefully hear from you later. We'll go ahead and I'll take a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
I believe, I believe there was going to be a modification on 8C.
Okay. And so, okay, so let's go ahead. We have a modification on 8C. So I'll go ahead and move to approve the agenda with the modification. We'll do that.
Can you describe what the modification is?
Yeah, the modification was to delay that to the next board meeting in that 8C, the approval of the change of grade to receive credit for a course in the previous semester, if you were to get a C. Moving that from a B to a C, Mr. Blanton is in the process of getting the feedback from the rest of the departments. I believe there's a memo from math and the counselors, but we want to make sure we could get the other departments in. He's meeting with them this week. So by the next board meeting, we should have that feedback.
Thanks.
I was the person that asked for those letters. And I sent Mr. Howard a message saying that as long as most of the staff was in agreement with that, I'm fine with that. We don't, I personally don't need those letters of from that department.
I did, I did check in with counselors and Mr. Blanton. And one of the questions I received back from a couple of board members was just if this would have an impact on any students knowing that the semester is coming to an end this Friday. And the response was there wouldn't be any students impacted by this change. So delaying it just to get that feedback is not going to have an impact on students for this semester. So I think it's okay to delay. We can just include that in the next board meeting.
Okay. Yeah. So all those that approve agenda with modifications, say aye.
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 We'll go ahead and move along to public comments. And just a reminder for any guests, we are doing virtual. And so if you would like to do a two to three minute verbal public comment, feel free to raise your hand. Use the raise your hand button at the bottom or type in the chat. And if you, once you're selected, please make sure that we have your name so we can go ahead and document it correctly in our record. So any public comments at this time? All right. We'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. We'll move along to reports. Dr. Herndon, superintendent report.
Thank you. I also just wanted to acknowledge all of the work, all of the feedback that's been happening over the last two weeks. It's been extremely important to hear, difficult at times, certainly, but necessary and important. And I, it's important moving forward that that level of communication openness continues. It's what I'm committed to doing moving forward. It's not about hoping, it's about doing it. So that's the plan. We are actually working on a communication for this week going out about updates from this week and what to expect for next week. So it's, I think we've got a couple of really good opportunities coming up to continue to get feedback on listening sessions. Some I'll outline in the COVID-19 report. I was speaking with the University of Washington that the listening sessions for COVID-19, not COVID-19, for the SROs. And we were planning the appropriate time to get the student listening feedback sessions for that. So I think that will be a good opportunity as well. And it's, it's really good. I like the process that we're able to still get that through the virtual piece. The large numbers can make it a little bit of a challenge in the connections, but that's okay. I'd rather do that, make sure we have people who are available. The staff feedback was important. The family feedback from the family night we had last weekend on Thursday was also a really good process to be able to go into each of the different family liaison groups, kind of group by group and get feedback. That was a really nice process and I'm glad we're back doing those family nights. So we'll have more of those. They're, they're being scheduled for once a month with various topics. So I think it's an exciting time to continue to get that feedback. And even when we're able to have these in person, it'll be just a process we need to continue. So I really do appreciate, appreciate it. Like I said, I mean, I'd rather hear the unvarnished truth because that's the only way improvement happens. So and I can't say enough about what the staff have done at all levels in the buildings, making sure technology was able to get out to families and students. Much of what board directors echoed out there, we have some amazing staff at all levels in the classrooms, preparing meals, transporting our students at the central office, coordinating the support that goes out there as well. So, I mean, I just can't speak enough about what staff do day in and day out at all levels to really try and make our students and families successful. So I look forward to continuing that every week and continuing to build back any of the damage that's, you know, historically been done and been done over the past several weeks. So it's, that's my goal. That's my, that's what I plan on doing. That's about it for specifics on the superintendent report. Some of the others are really more COVID-related. So when we're ready for that, when I'm, myself and Ms. Maestro will be able to chime in and give some updates on the COVID reports.
Any questions at this time, or shall we move along to the COVID report?
I have a question around technology, but it may be more appropriate in the COVID report. Do you have a preference, Dr. Herndon?
I can field that now.
Okay. So I'm curious, I know last week at our meeting on Wednesday, we asked around like if there was any update on just technology, the status of maybe folks that may be missing technology. I know that Mr. Baker had said that he heard from a few teachers. Just curious if we heard from any more and if there's any more concrete information or assurance that every young person that needs their technology has it in hand.
I did check in with Mr. Baker today, asked him that question. He said he wasn't aware he hadn't received any additional reports from either parents or students or teachers about specific inabilities to connect. It doesn't mean that that's still not there, but as far as he's aware, we don't have any gaps. Now, again, it's always possible and it's also possible that, you know, late last week, there wasn't an issue. But in the last day or two, there could have been an emerging issue and he may know, may not know about it. But the report I had from him was that all students should be able to be connected to their classrooms. If you're aware, please let me know. And I'm happy to, I'm happy to bridge that gap as well.
Not necessarily. Thank you.
Okay, let's move along to COVID report.
So we have several areas in this particular report to update. And I'll be joined also by Ms. Maestro. I want to talk first about where we stand with our PPE. So we do currently have a little over 6,000 rapid tests on hand, which is great. That allows us the opportunity to respond to any symptomatic students or staff that may be presenting themselves. There, we did get a notification on, over the weekend from the Department of Health and OSPI, Dan Olympia, originally when the governor had made an announcement about the availability of a million tests available throughout the state. That sounds like a lot of tests. And it is a lot of tests. There are, however, 1 million public school students in the state of Washington. So basically that goes to about a test per student. And as we've seen, there are a couple of ways in which more than one test per student may actually play out. For athletics, Department of Health had been requiring extracurricular activities for students to test three times a week. So right there, you have a certain amount of tests that that would need to happen. So you can imagine that the number of tests that districts were requesting from the Department of Health in that first week of January, as Omicron was continuing, the Omicron variant was continuing to rise. There is a substantial demand for those. So states made, that was, the process was to make your request for tests through the Department of Health. And that's where we had made our requests, our 5,600 tests that we had ordered in the first week of January that were supposed to arrive in that second week of January, which never came. So the notification we had over the weekend was, this went out to all superintendents, was that the Department of Health has canceled all those orders. And now they are coordinating receiving tests through the ESDs, the nine ESDs throughout the state. That is where I picked up tests a week ago was from the ESD, our 5,000 tests. And then we picked up an additional 1,500 tests on Monday. And they have been told that, you know, we should be conscientious about the distribution and use of those particular tests because they're now, you know, week to week. For us, our 6,500 tests are a pretty good amount. If we take our high watermark of the amount of tests that we needed to respond to symptomatic students or staff, that's our height is about 600 for the week. That factors in also testing the extracurricular. So we would have enough tests for a while. All that being said, we are planning on having a rapid test event. We're just coordinating the date. It would either be Friday or this Monday. We may be so on our Friday. I just want to get the details down before we have that. So that would make available any students or staff who are presenting symptoms. They could come get a rapid test at the location. I don't, I can't remember what it is right now, but we'll have it in the communication that would go out. And that would still leave us plenty of tests to respond for a while, for when we return to person. And then be able to respond to symptomatic students and staff. I know on Friday, I think the demand for tests, I think it's still a significant demand, but I do believe it is starting to decrease. I, my house in North Seattle, I, there's a testing site right up the road. And I've seen that line decrease. I had to go get another COVID test on Friday for a procedure on Monday. And I did that in Des Moines at a testing location that didn't require an appointment. And I literally was waiting for the line. I drove all the way through the parking lot and I was the only person at that testing site. Again, I think some people are experiencing varying responses to the ability to get tests. So I don't want to say it's easier, there's no demand because there certainly is depending on where you go. But I have seen a decrease in that and probably is correlating with the decrease that we're seeing in the rate of test positives for recent COVID tests. But I know it's still there. I know we'll still have cases. But as far as our PPE goes in tests, we, I think we're, I feel very comfortable with where we are and being equipped to meet those responses. For masks, we also received a substantial amount of masks, which is great. So we've distributed thousands of masks out to the various schools. We received the shipment of 9,000 KN95 masks on Monday. So we have masks out in the buildings for students and at the secondary level, we would have that available for staff and students. And then we also have N95 masks. We received thousands of those as well. We are following up and Ms. Maestro may be able to respond to this. The, I know there have been some solicitations and links about child-sized KN95 masks, but I don't believe those are FDA-approved. So it's not to say that they're not out there. But I don't know if DOH actually endorses those as a viable piece. And for us, we do have the temporary masks that are smaller for students. And, and families may be having additional masks as well that, that fit the kind of smaller faces of smaller children. But the actual KN95s for children, I don't believe are FDA-approved. There are a couple websites and links that say they are, but I'm not. As far as I can remember, and maybe that's changed, they could be moving to that. But Ms. Maestro may have an update on that. And then, so we do have a significant number of masks, which is great enough for staff and students for quite some, for several weeks, which would be good. And then for, we're looking for a session, listening session with the city of Tuaola and King County Department of Health, probably early next week, just to talk about what we're seeing in our community trends and what we have, any advice on additional guidance. We just received some updated guidance from State Department of Health. So we'll be sending that out as well. I know the guidance continues to just kind of come in and shape and morph depending on what's happening with the current variant. But those are the updates on PPE, test availability and masks, and then also future listening session as well. So I'll have Ms. Maestro chime in if she has additional thoughts or information.
Hello. Oh, I'm not sure that I see myself. Hello. Just about the updated guidance, we did receive a new COVID decision tree. And that'll help out with determining whether or not students or staff members should quarantine. And that guidance came out last night. So we'll be getting that communication out. I believe it's available in about 25 different languages. So that'll be really helpful. And then Jennifer and myself are working on creating kind of a a guideline regarding contact tracing and how our district performs contact tracing. And I think that'll be very helpful for staff and and families so that they're kind of able to be more familiar with the process. And then in terms of the masks, I myself am not too familiar with whether or not the FDA has approved KN95 masks for pediatrics. And I believe that should be all the updates for me. Thank you.
I did also want to mention a couple of other staffing supports for buildings which were touched upon last week. So through some agencies, we have confirmed at least three specific contact tracers. So the areas that we are looking on is to have one person who can do contact tracing in each building. We have three already on hand. Ms. Jones was able to get another one today. And then we're hoping to confirm the fifth one tomorrow. And we would be hiring those folks through the duration of the school year. So even at some point, and there will be at some point, guidance that contact tracing is not something that we'll need to do. We know still through the pandemic that there'll be some work that they can do. Or if the need for contact tracing were to come up again through the guidance, then we would certainly do that. And we'd have staff on hand to do that. Additionally, we're trying to fill the additional quarantine specialist positions. I met the person who is filling that role at Foster today. I met that person. I was up at Foster High School today. So that means we have three for sure. And again, we're looking to fill those other two positions, at least with a long-term sub who can cover. Um, at least with a long-term sub who can cover that position until we can do a, a full hire. That hiring process has been in place. Since October, um, but we want to make sure we have someone on hand who can do that. Uh, specific job. So then that way. The nurses can do what nurses need to do in the building. We have someone specifically set aside to do contact tracing. And we have a quarantine specialist. So I believe those are the COVID updates, uh, for now that I have, happy to take it. Yes.
Do you know if we will be going virtually or in person next week and how soon we will notify the families?
Yes, good question. So, uh, again, I want to take, make sure that, um. Just doing the calculations for everything that we have, that we have enough P P E, I believe we do as far as masks and tests. I also wanted to make sure we have enough. Of the dedicated staff to do the positions that we said we were gonna do and the contact tracing and quarantine specialists. Um, previously I had mentioned that. You know, I want to make sure we can make that call before the weekend. So people are as prepared as possible. So if we can onboard those other positions, then I would feel pretty comfortable with that, assuming of course that. Um, the data in our community continues to decrease as for positive cases, which it has been doing, which is really. It's an awesome trend. Um, I will say in our surrounding school districts. Um, they've noticed they're able to fill their substitutes, um, and positions that are out. They're seeing a decrease in the number of COVID cases, um, for students and staff, which are all, again, really good signs. But I want to look at Tuaquilla specific and see what we have. So for me, it's about the continued downward trend. And the ability to fill in for any, um, discrepancies that we may have there. Um, for staffing and. Yeah, so there, you know, a couple of possibilities that, that we're prepared for. Um, if we're not fully staffed, would we do something like bring elementary back but not secondary? Um, do we bring everybody back? You know, the end of this week is the end of the semester. So, um, Monday is also a non-student day. So kind of again, gives us one, uh, an additional day as well. And I just want to see where every, all the rest of the kind of communities around us are. Um, regarding what they're seeing in their schools. As far as I know. Um, and again, this is why I need to check around us. Um, I'm not aware of, of other schools that are extending beyond this week. So, um. That's, that's another piece. Again, I'm trying to be Tuaquilla specific, but when I think about kind of our. General region that we're looking at and the trends that are there, I think it's informative to look at that as well.
If we don't know soon, can we let the families know that? Your, your thinking on that?
Yes, so we do have a communication that's going out, um. About that, that gives updates about where we are in P P E and, um, decision for next week.
Okay, thank you.
Translated to, by the way.
Did we do a survey last week of, of staff and? Um, what kind of feedback did we get?
Yeah, so I did a survey, um, with staff, just talking about areas where we need to continue to improve. Um, things that they feel they would need to, um. Feel better about being back in person. And that's a lot of these areas that I've talked about, making sure we have enough P P E. Making sure that our communications are, are clearer about what the expectations are. Um, making sure we have that staff to support in quarantine specialists and contact tracing. So I'm trying to check each one of those. Um, specific areas.
I think we also got feedback about, um, the hallways in putting the dividers back up in the hallways. And limiting the seating capacity at meals for the high school and middle school. Did you get that also?
Yeah, I think there was feedback about spacing, uh, um, uh, students out and being able to eat outside. And that's conversations that, that they've been having at the building level to make sure that that can happen or see if that can happen. Um. And also anything about the dividers. I know there's also been feedback about just, you know, making sure that students wear their masks. And staff wear their masks and people follow through with the protocols that we have. Those are all things that, yes, we would expect people are doing. They just need the reminders, just like anything else. Any, any other expectations in school? Um, that students are reminded, you know, that'll have to come from some staff and additional students to just say, hey, remember, you gotta keep your mask on. You gotta, and in the beginning of the year, I think there was a lot of that. And then as we kind of went along, people got. Maybe a little comfortable with that. And so that slipped. So we just need those reminders out there again.
Okay, thank you.
A few questions for you, um, going back first to, um, P P E related things. Um, so, um, glad to hear that we've got, kind of got at least a little bit of a surplus for, um, those rapid tests. And also I'm so glad, thank you for organizing a testing event. I think that's a great idea. Um, and hopefully we'll make students and families feel, uh, good about coming back whenever that happens. Um, and I'm curious about like, do you, what is kind of your, like a general number in your head for when you're gonna? Uh, seek out more tests, um, like wh- what depletion do you want to see before you're really starting to find? Um, other, more streams of P P E.
Yeah, again, I, I think if we take the, the high watermark of six hundred and we would know more next week too, coming back. To see if we're still in that high watermark. The six hundred is really what we're looking at. At that buildup as Omicron was peaking. So that first and second week of January. So if next week, we were seeing the same kind of tests because we had either students or staff symptomatic. Then that to me would say, I want to make sure, you know, we have. Um, two weeks worth of testing that would get us through any of those pieces. Uh, Puget Sound E S D right now is only fulfilling one week at a time for the needs. Being a smaller district for us, I think they would be able to meet the needs that we have. Um, which is helpful because if we say, look, uh, we need two thousand tests. Uh, for the next week, we can probably get that. If we were a bigger district and they said, hey, we need sixty thousand tests. I think they're gonna be challenged with that. So I think our possibility of fulfilling that successfully from Puget Sound E S D is helpful. The other pieces, they have those in their warehouse right there. So we can just pick them up. We don't have to worry about them being delivered and delayed, um, which is helpful. I know it's a challenge for them to do that because that's not what really they were equipped to do. So I think. If I'm kind of reading between the lines from Department of Health and, uh, the rest. That the idea is that as Omicron decreases, the demand for tests will also decrease. And they won't have to do that for very long. And then D O H can fill those orders again through the regular channels.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, another question on masks. I know there's been some concern from folks about, even with such a large amount of masks on hand. Um, just the, you know, knowing that you can only wear that mask so many times. Um, particularly, you know, yeah, you can only wear it so many times. Um, so two things, one, um. I, I wonder if it would be valuable and maybe this is something that's already happened at some point, but just to reiterate, like, how to care for and clean masks. Um, or, you know, how to best make sure that they can last as long as they can. Um, and even some just like verbiage around how many times you should be able to wear those K and ninety-five masks before you need to toss them. I think it's like three or four, uh, maybe four or five. I don't remember exactly. Um, so I just think that could be really useful, um, potentially giving, again, just giving teachers tools, um, to know. Um, and then I'm curious how many, um, I, I saw a few emails that went out, uh, reminding folks that they can schedule a fitting to get those in ninety-five masks. And I was curious if you have any indication for how many folks have tapped into that? Um, and, uh, yeah, to get those, those fittings done.
Yeah, I, I did get some feedback. Uh, we have the fittings that are happening for staff here. Um, I believe it's tomorrow and all of the appointments were booked. So I think it's ninety-five staff coming in tomorrow to get their N ninety-fives fitted. Um, others may have already had them fitted at the building level. Um, I don't know the full numbers on that, but I do know, I believe all of the. Uh, appointments booked for tomorrow are filled.
Cool, cool. That's great. And that's exciting that hopefully just, even just reminding folks that that was available, uh, was, was helpful enough to. You know, to get, get access to those. Um, uh, I know, uh, uh. Oh, quick question around COVID, uh, vaccine boosters and clinics. I know we've been holding those kind of regularly. I think last, uh, report. You mentioned that, uh, Costco was, uh, didn't have quite the inventory to be able to help us support that. I was wondering, um, where we're at with that. And if we've, uh, Costco's not a, um, doesn't have the capacity to do that right now. If we've sought other partnerships, potentially with Safeway or other pharmacies. Um, to bring a booster vaccine clinic in soon.
Um, I would check with, um. Mister Dragunov, he was the one that had that connection. I know he was looking for a couple of those. I'm, I'm not aware of the timeframe on that. However, I do know there was some communication with the city. And they are offering some vaccination clinics too. So we're gonna make people aware of those opportunities, even if we don't have them. But we are looking to get partnerships so that we can continue them back here, um, at Foster High School.
Thank you. And then one more question. Um, actually two more, uh, the quarantine specialist. I'm just curious around what the process is for kind of promoting those positions. Um, are there like certain platforms that y'all post, that we post on, um, how, how does that process work? Is there any way that we can boost those a little bit differently? Um, I know hiring is a challenge everywhere in every industry right now. So.
Yeah, I, I don't know that offhand. I would have, again, um, any of the questions from tonight, I'll make sure that we get the responses back out to you. But, um. Yeah, I don't know all of the avenues where those have been. I know being a challenge, we, again, we, we've reached out to. Um, some of the agencies to help us fill those if the traditional spots haven't been able to be there and, and be filled. So. Um, I think we just need to continue to try and. Find wherever we can. You're correct. I mean, hiring almost any position for any industry is a challenge right now.
Um, and I think the last one for me, um, is I know I've shared, um, expressed concern with you individually and, um, on, uh, previous meetings. Just about how we're gonna operate, operationalize the new COVID guidelines around the five days. Particularly when in the elementary level, the only masks that we have available that fit. Um, are those surgical masks. And I would argue that those actually don't fit. Um, and so how are we ensuring that young people are wearing the appropriate mask on day six? When they return from isolation, um, and then are still engaging in spaces with. Other folks. Um, and then of course that brings in the food, uh, and the mealtime issue, which I know you've already mentioned. Um, but the reality is if we come back next Tuesday, we need to have a plan in place for how we're supporting those kids that come back on day six. Cause they can't be around other folks without their mask on.
Yeah, I think again, we'll be, um, reviewing, uh, what we have with the, whatever we have with the updated guidelines. And then what, um, uh, Miss Maestro may have in place and how it can support the schools, just to make sure. Students coming back, um, are as safe as possible and not continuing to transmit the virus. So. Um, we have looked at a, a couple of the protocols that we have. We want to make sure that we do have a properly fitted mask for them. Um, and so that's one of the things we probably be looking at. To say, okay, before we're back here, let's check the mask to make sure it fits correctly. Um, let's make sure we have a good plan for you for where you are. Um, we were looking at some of the other pieces about, uh, a rapid test too, coming out. Uh, after the quarantine time. So we would have the ability to do that as well.
So I just want to acknowledge that I feel like I'm still. Hearing that we're working on something or we're looking into it. And yet, if we're trying to bring young people back soon. I just hope that we have that played in place before they come back. So we're then not scrambling or increasing transmission.
So, yeah, that's part of the review before we send out the communication on that for this week.
And, and we will communicate to the staff about. The process of contact tracing so that.
Yeah, we would have the contact trace specialist be doing the contact tracing. So we're trying to get away from staff having to do some of that, or at least have the point person to. That they would be dedicated to say, here's the person you connect with about contact tracing.
Okay, thank you.
I know I said the last one's my last one. This is actually my last one, sorry. Um, when it comes to those, those new folks, I'm, I'm so glad and, and appreciate for the creative ways that you've been able to fill those contact tracing roles. Um, I just curious, what is your plan for ensuring that all staff in the building know, um, who those folks are? What the process is for connecting with them, um, and all that. How, what's the training process gonna be look like for, um, staff? For those folks and for staff coming back into the building, hopefully next week.
Yeah, so, um, Ms. Jones, uh, who's been working with the COVID protocol team is, uh, sending. Will be sending the communications out of identifying who those people are in the process of, uh, doing the contact tracing to make sure it's clear for folks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Done now.
My question builds upon Director Morris's question. Um, that we have staff that are serving students in multiple classrooms. We have staff that are covered, have had to cover. Right, classrooms and, um, be flexible in order to continue classes. I'm just, I would like specific ideas or to make sure that, um, not only an immediate teacher. And students in the room are contacted, but then how does that get communicated at the building level and regularly? So daily, right? So that, then people can become more aware if they've been exposed.
Yeah, I, again, that's part of what this content, this contact specialist. Their job is to make sure that the whole loop of contact tracing is closed. And that includes the communication that goes out. That was one of the pieces that was not happening in our process. Um, and part of that was that some of the people who. We thought in the process were sending something out, either weren't receiving that information or the follow-through wasn't happening. So by having this dedicated person to do that, that communication should go out specifically to any of the staff. Who are contacted and to the entire building. And then if it's not, I mean, this is also part of the follow-up is that, um. You know, once we have these pieces in place, it will be a check-in again with staff to say. Okay, we've hired these folks. We have this process communicated out clearly. Is it happening the way it should be happening?
And I have one more question. Um, so like in other settings, there might be like a huddle or a face-to-face. Meet before the day kind of thing to do briefings and things like that. I'm just wondering how, um. The communication will be clear enough. So, you know, rather than just an email alone. How will we make sure that all staff are on board and feel confident that they have the information they need to be safe? And provide safe learning spaces for students.
Yeah, that's something that, um, we do have the written communication, um, and the email ready, but. Uh, I think it's a, it's an excellent point to review that also with our building administrators. Cause they're kind of right there in the building to see what's gonna be the best feedback loop for them. Um, also so that we can alert and support them. They know, I, I trust our building administrators that they know their staff pretty well. So, um. If they're receiving feedback about other ways in which they've been able to connect with their staff, that's, that's important for us to hear as well. So that we're following through and supporting them.
I have no other questions. Anything else before we move along?
Just, just one more thing. Would it be possible to have like a district meeting like we did in August to? Talk about those things. So everybody gets the same message?
Would that be? Yes, I mean, after we put those in place again, I'm happy to have another staff listening session to make sure that they're happening. So.
Thank you.
And if people have additional questions, um. Remind me what the, uh, way to get your answers in the district. So if it's families, if it's, um, staff.
Yeah, people can definitely email me, uh, directly or Miss Cor, and we'll make sure that. The appropriate person can connect and respond as quickly as possible. I've been responding to several as they come in. Um, but I know other staff have been too. And I also want to make sure that things are clear. Sometimes we may not get it, uh, building principal oftentimes gets some of that communication too. So I want to make sure that they have everything they need to respond. And if they don't know something or they. I want to make sure that they have everything they need to respond. And if they don't know something or they need to let us know that. We're able to follow up at that level as well. So either myself, Miss Core or their building principal.
Director Bullerjack, Director Larson, any questions before we move on? All right, we'll go ahead and move along to student rep and directors report and we'll. Start with our student representative, Mr. Samuel Thea Pito.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Okay, um, I don't think I have much to say. Um, I'm I'm happy with everything that we're doing. To make to ensure that we will safely go back. I like this. I also like that we are we're gonna hire. Two more people for contact tracing. So I feel like that's the main problem and. Yeah, and I feel like everything's going good and. I just want the information of whether we're gonna stay online or go in person. To be communicated like as soon as possible to our family so they're aware and are able to plan for the next week. And yeah, that's all I have to say.
All right, we'll go ahead and just pass the baton. So Mr. Fiat Pito, will you select the next director to give a director report?
Director Bullerjack, because she's she's the first one I see on my screen.
All right, thank you, Sam. Uh, director's report. So it's been a busy time paying attention to a lot of things and. I hear a lot about the fatigue and the mental anguish that our students, our staff. And I know that our superintendent and cabinet and even your school board directors. Are feeling the same thing. So we can really appreciate what what people are going through. Like I mentioned, I went to CV and I went to Foster High School and checked in with folks. I really appreciate the depth with which everyone is working and the dedication. And I appreciate. The fatigue and the and the anguish that people are feeling. I also went to the listening sessions. I followed Dr. Herndon around in the. Different language groups because I just wanted to hear what our what our families were. Were asking and asking for, and I think it was not a surprise that many of them are very worried about their younger children. Not being in school. The supervision at home or the ability to be virtual at home. Is very, very difficult for our younger kids and we heard that over and over. And. So I'm, I I don't think there's any doubt that that we know that this is a trade off. And that we're trying to make the best choice for the health of of everyone in our community. I also had the opportunity to. Officiate over a service for Helen Ives and maybe most of you may not have heard the name Helen Ives. It was Pat Larson. Who used to be the principal at Foster. It was her mother who died, ninety four year old resident of Tuck Willa, her whole life. Lived on Tuck Willa Hill as she was growing up, moved a few blocks or streets away. And lived there with her husband who also grew up on the hill. All those years and was a bulldog through and through. And I think they're in their fourth or fifth generation of Bulldogs coming through the school now. And if you've gone by the rock lately, you'll see that the family, the Ives, Larson, McCarthy. Those families now have put their signatures on the rock. To remember their mom Grammy and and their connection with the district. So that. That was a wonderful thing to be a part of. And then my, the last thing I want to mention is the steering committee that. Bridgette and I went to earlier today. Bridgette sent me her notes. Suggesting that I might be able to share them. Oh, my gosh, Bridgette, there's a whole page of them. We got a lot. Out of that experience of meeting with staff from, I think mostly Foster and Showalter. But just once again, reminding us to not treat. The the our school year as business as usual. Really pay attention to what's going on in our classrooms, in our teachers, in their families, in their home life. As well as in the district to make sure that we check in often with them. That we show them that it matters, that they matter, that what's going on matters. That we pay attention and put in place things to help with mental health and fatigue. And Bridgette has done a good job of sharing resources, both with that group and and she'll speak more to that, but. Good job, Bridgette. Also. A reminder that when our staff does give us feedback. That we need to validate that. And even if it's something that we don't think we can put in place. You know, gratitude for the engagement and the creativity. That is being expressed and making sure that we that we do validate all of our staff because we really feel. We feel for them and we love their expertise, but sometimes in the intense moments of the day, we. Forget to express that very well. And also that one of the people at the meeting today said something about that. She has built relationships with her students. So she and her students are are connecting in this virtual world and doing. Well, but she doesn't feel like those around her. Especially us, I'll I'll take that, that we are also connecting with her. And so. She asks us to do the same thing with her or with our staff. As they have done with their students. And I think I thought that was a great example of maybe where we haven't. Done as well as we should. So building community. With our staff, just like our staff has done with their students. That was the long way around of trying to say that. And I think that's what I have for tonight. I really appreciate all the sharing that's gone on. And the ways that people have honored me by sharing their thoughts and. Their solutions and their ideas. So I will pass it on to the person under me, which is Edna.
Okay, I've been able to touch base with some of the CTE instructors. And learning more about their classes and their curriculum and. Also hearing about the enthusiasm their students show for their programs. And I would encourage any board member who has an opportunity to go visit these classes or any class. Many of the schools. And I think it would be very beneficial for us. To celebrate and advertise these courses. What a dynamic way to keep the students on campus instead of sending them. Other places and for promoting these programs and. Other students to come to Foster. I'm definitely looking forward to when the schools open up more and we can. Freely attend classes. Bridgette?
Thank you, Director Morris. So I'll start with the most recent. So this Friday, Board of Direct or Directors are going to be visiting with Foster seniors. As part of their civics class and classes plural and. Also just want to acknowledge that we were sent letters from Foster seniors and so was Dr. Herndon and. In them, the students were able to provide straightforward recommendations, ideas. Valuable experience. So in terms of their lived experience and what they've been through and then also advocated. And so just want to say thank you and looking forward for all of us to come in and be able to. Continue dialogue and and with each other. And then I have, so I, there is a handout that I provided because I'm providing websites and resources in this director report. I'll start second, the Tuck Willa Children's Foundation and Stillwater's snack pack. Response occurred when the elementary schools were going to temporarily shut down. Really hustled, reached out to community, got community volunteers. And so Director Morris, Carolyn Austin Williams, Joanna McConnell, Jonathan Joseph, Alan Howard, Riley Haggard. Tuck Willa Children's Foundation donated over twelve hundred dollars. And so. With the snack packs, those packs go home typically for the weekend with two days worth of. Food, but with and coming together, we were also able to provide five days worth of meals. But while the schools were shut down. And so just want to thank the community and we had a. Quite a few community volunteers too. So thank you for coming and serving students. The next thing I'm going to share is mental health in King County. And so I've got depression, anxiety and suicide risk has risen, of course. And we have estimates now from the Center for Disease Control that one in four people under the age of eighteen have struggled with suicidal thoughts. Since the beginning of the pandemic. So when you think about kind of the mental health of the youth. And our communities, it's very, very important to really recognize that that creating safety, health and wellness. And recognizing needs is very, very important. So I shared a King County School Health Report. For anyone who may not have seen it, it's extremely eye opening. And then also was able to. Provide. So another challenge in with with black indigenous and communities of color. Even before the pandemic in terms of culturally responsive resources. Non even non traditional types of resources have always been very limited and challenging and some of the existing. Services, structures have even not only in the past, continue to this day harm. And so in terms of, you know, broken trust and and also lots of barriers to access resources. As you can imagine, this just gets even worse with with the pandemic. And so I provided two websites. One is actually through, they have great resources there, Seattle Central. For their students and families of their students, they provide all kinds of alternative options. And so that's one resource. And so these are in in these resources too that are listed here come out of communities. And so communities have responded to the needs of of the community. And so just want to be able to share that with you. Another one is, that's my, there we go. A NAMI, the National, let's see, Association on Mental Illness. And so they actually have an online weekly BIPOC. Support group for anyone that has had experiences with mental health issues. They also have family. Online right now, support groups. They also provide additional resources for our BIPOC community members. And then I also listed a very common King County youth programs. And of course, you know, to realize that. There may be wait lists, there may be, but but just to give that additional information. And then the other thing that I'll speak on tonight is not a recent, it ever since I've. Been in the district, my my family's been in the district, it's an ongoing issue. And with the pandemic, it. Actually continues and then can be even worse. And so that would be. Anti-black racism and bias that occurs in our district at all levels. And over the years, I have seen amazing staff, leaders, students, families. Be hurt, be harmed and and out of safety oftentimes will leave or look for other opportunities to be. Acknowledged, promoted, that type of thing. And so just want to acknowledge that and recognize that, especially in times of crisis. We can oftentimes kind of regress in defense mechanisms. And so in thinking about how we might be. Acting towards each other, acting towards students, just to really be. Aware of that. And and now more than ever, we need to be able to. Love and care for each other. And so that's the end of my report. I'll go ahead and call in Director Larson.
Thank you. So. Guess I'll start with. The CTE area. So. I went up and had an opportunity to visit the advanced biotechnology. Area and classrooms up at Foster High School and. A couple of issues that came up, one of which I mentioned in the in the board work session, but the other issue. Was related to a project that Mr. Renz is trying to get going and that is. It turns out that in. The biotechnology classes, you know, you end up doing like DNA research and things like that or projects and. And a lot of those experiments and projects require. An organism that, you know, reproduces frequently, like fruit flies are the typical one that that a lot of labs use because they can. Reproduce and you can do something to the to the their genetics and then see what happens over multiple generations. And there's another. An organism, it's a, it's a small worm that is used in a lot of the high school biotech courses and. The University of Washington was producing these these worms for use in the in the classrooms around the area. And they decided to. Get out of that business and wanted to pass it along to a high school to 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 do this and set up a little business and so forth. So. Anyway, there's there's an opportunity and it it brought up the question, kind of, are do we as a district? Have the kind of legal and financial infrastructure. Available so that, you know, we could set something like that up for students. I mean, it's it's a great opportunity. In terms of students, you know, being able to work in a in a small business and and. Look at the, you know, how to get the product out there and produce it and all those kinds of things. And so and but I'm not sure that. You know, we have that structure in place. I I don't know, Dr. Hernan, are you aware of, is that, is that something that? You think we have the structure to support or?
We are following up to see if we're in the position to be able to do that or not. I don't have a definitive answer on that right now.
Okay, I was noticing there are Vancouver, Washington, you know, they're running a. I know they're running a student store for various things. And so. It's, I think it would be a really good structure to have in place. We also have our at Foster High School, the Future Business Leaders Group, which runs this, you know, is training to be able to be business people. So. It seems like if we can, you know, figure out that infrastructure would be a. It would be a good opportunity for a lot, potentially, you know, more than one of our CTE programs to. To be able to give students the experience that way. The second thing I wanted to just talk about a little bit was back in December, I went to the the. We are a conference, that's the Washington Education Research Association Conference. And there was a number of. Good presentations, one of them given by a national education figures called Jean-Claude Burchard and. He was showing in his talk, the what's called the kind of the leaky pipeline of education. Which we've seen before, the roadmap project has produced it for our areas. It's basically. The concept as you as you go through your educational experience. And you know, you don't meet certain benchmarks along the way, the chances of you. Succeeding in your educational. Life. Are diminished as you go along. And so the chances of getting a four year degree or even some post secondary education, which is. Kind of the the ultimate, one of the goals these years, these days is reduces. So. In particular, you know, if you go back to the, you know, in the in the system, back to the elementary grades and you're talking about elementary reading. And math, you know, if you don't, if you don't have those skills. Kind of mastered or at least up to the minimum grade level. Your chances of actually getting a post secondary degree are very, very small, like ten percent. So. It kind of brought brings up to me the focus when I was thinking about our strategic plan. We have those measures in there of third grade reading and and fifth. We have those measures in there of third-grade reading and and fifth-grade math. But, you know, the question is, you know, how do we get, you know, do a better job of getting students up to the to their grade level? And which brings up the whole question of, you know, if you go farther back in the system to the to the early learning programs, the critical nature of having, you know, early education available for all of our students. And, you know, we have, and I was, when I was looking at the strategic plan, I was kind of noticing that those benchmarks were kind of missing. And I mean, it turns out we have, you know, particularly at Cascade View, as I mentioned before, that, you know, they got, you know, they have an outstanding early learning program. They got a 4.9 out of 5 on their early achievers thing. And, you know, one of the, it seems like one of our benchmarks to follow should be, you know, what percentage of our students are getting, you know, this outstanding early learning experience? Because that's going to be a huge, potentially a huge predictor of their success. And not all of it, of course, will be done inside of our district. There will be partnerships with outside early learning providers. But anyway, I just, I would like to see, just a thought for, as we look at our strategic planning data dashboard, that we include a couple of, you know, indicators related to what percentage of our students are actually getting that, you know, high-quality, early learning experience. And particularly if we can keep it in our data to see, because if we can show that students that are getting this high-quality learning experience are actually doing better as they go into first grade, second grade, third grade, that will be some extremely good data to go down to Olympia and advocate for, you know, more and more early learning opportunities. And ultimately, every student needs to have that. So anyway, that's just a little advocacy for that. So that's all I got for the director report. Do you want me to just go right into the legislature? Okay, so the legislative.
Has everybody gone?
Oh, yeah.
No worries, no worries. Mine will be fairly quick. And I know I tend to not always be concise, but I'll be concise. So my goal for the first few months was to really kind of start to lay a foundation for effective working relationships and to start just getting familiar with the lay of the land within the district. And I feel like I've started to really do that by starting to just get in spaces where folks are, right? Whether that's community members or teachers. So I've had the privilege over the last few months to join the Steering Together gatherings that Director Bullock Jack mentioned earlier. I wasn't able to go today, but I've been able to go the last few months. Also, I've been able to attend the Ration Equity Meetings at both Foster High School and Thorndike. I'm really grateful for these opportunities to just listen, learn. I'm just trying to absorb everything that's being shared and offered. And then it's also just a great opportunity to meet many of the amazing folks that are working in in the schools. I've also had the opportunity to work in collaboration with Director Cora Ryder, Ryder, sorry, Ms. Corr and Mr. Hayes to review our policies around public comment. We're really trying to work to create more inclusive practices. And so it's been really great to work on that and keep an eye out because I'll hopefully be able to put together, my goal is to put together a community listening session around that topic to get some input from community around how we can best create an environment where you feel comfortable to bring your comments and your ideas and your thoughts to us in this space. And then I had, I spoke to this earlier, I had the opportunity to visit Thorndike Elementary, actually twice over the last few weeks. One, I had a great time just hanging out with Ms. Thomas. She showed me around the school, introduced me to some folks. It was just really, really great to hear how things are going from her perspective. And then lastly, and probably one of my favorite things is, I've had the opportunity to, also in partnership with Bridget, to work with some students at Foster High School as they are working on a podcast project. And I feel really, really grateful that they even let me be a part of that. But it's just been a really, really incredible experience, not only to just listen to the amazing knowledge and wisdom of those young people, but also just like the vulnerability and transparency and just like the, yeah, that they have had in sharing their story and their experience. So that has been just a real, real pleasure. So I'm excited about more opportunities to continue meeting with folks and getting in spaces where I can, you know, hear from you and just continue building positive relationships. So thanks so much. Now I'll kick it back to Director Larson.
Okay, thank you. So the legislative report, I want to start off with, so we're going to have the West of the Washington State School Director Association set up for next week. Some 15-minute meetings with our legislators, that is Representative Brookwest, Representative Hackney, and Senator Hasagawa. And to talk about the issues that have kind of surfaced statewide, which are primarily the the issues around staffing allocations, particularly nurses, social workers, counselors, psychologists, and what they call budget stability. That is the fact that, you know, we still, a lot of districts, including ours, have a significant enrollment decline, which is caught, could cause a significant reduction in dollars coming. Last session, we were able to use our, you know, budget enrollment numbers before COVID started to get funding, so that funding did not get cut. However, that issue, that was only for one year, so that needs to be revisited. And then the other big one, they're talking this year is transportation. And that is, you know, getting transportation covered for, you know, special education students experiencing homelessness, which are not well-covered in the current system. So in any event, if anybody, so we've got these 15-minute blocks and they're going to be on Hasagawa on February 1st, that's Tuesday at 2:15, Hackney, February 2nd, Wednesday at 11:40, and Brookwest, February 4th, Friday at 9:00 AM. So these are Zoom meetings and I'm going to be at all of them. And it sounds like probably somebody, Avanti Brookwest, who's a board member in the rented school district, will probably be there. She signed up for it. I have to, I'm going to touch base and see if she's going to come. But anybody else who wants to be a part of these, there, like I said, we get, we get about 15 minutes. And so if if there's some, one of these topics that, you know, any, you know, the board member, any student, any, any staff, any community member wants to talk, we can try and coordinate that. There's a limited amount of time, but, you know, that's that's available. So I kind of throw that out there. If whoever, if somebody wants to to do that, you know, we need to register. So it's going to be a Zoom meeting, so you need to get the Zoom link for it. But let me just pause at this moment and just kind of run around, do the circle thing around the board to see if if anybody's interested in being involved in that or knows somebody interested involved in that. And I want to start with Director Hoover. I know last time you were interested in getting in on some of the legislative stuff. So thoughts, comments, questions?
Yeah, I'm definitely interested and potentially willing to jump into a 15-minute slot with you if it if it works out for my schedule. Sorry, I know that it's not super helpful, but I'd love to participate.
Okay, so I'll send you, I'll send you, I just rattled off these dates because they just came in just today. I'll send you an email with with all the times. And then you can tell me, you know, if you're interested and then kind of what the topic, if you want to speak, then what, you know, what the topic might be related to this area.
Yeah, that sounds perfect. Thank you so much.
I don't know, anybody else? Director Apo Rider, are you interested?
I had the opportunity to participate last year, so I want to create space. I do have some thoughts about, you know, so of course, we've got Representative Theopito here. So that might be opportunity. And then on Friday, when we meet with the six periods of foster seniors, I believe seniors, maybe that's an opportunity too to invite, since it is part of their civics work that they're doing.
Yep. Okay, put that on the list. I don't know, any other Director Bullock Jack?
I I just can't add it to my plate. I really, I'm really grateful that you're doing it, Dave, because I know you do a good job.
Director Morris, thoughts, comments, questions?
Well, yes, I would like to get back to you on that.
Okay. All right, so I will.
Director Larson, I have a quick question. If there's anybody else out in the community, anybody who might be interested, what's the best way to maybe reach out to you?
Yeah, I can just email me. Okay, so I will send the schedule of, okay, let me ask Samuel Theopito.
Oh, yeah, I'm actually interested. I'll, okay, good, email me the information.
Okay, so you're, just to give you some information, last year, your sister did this. And she, the the subject was kind of mental health, which I know lots of students have a lot of interest in that subject. So and it's it's primarily kind of a couple of minutes about your experience, you know, about, you know, are there enough mental health supports at your school or do you know peers are struggling, that kind of thing? So anything that you can put together along those lines. But all, so I'll send you the time, the unfortunately, you know, all the times are, yeah, during the school day. So but I'll send you those those times and and you can figure out if you want to get involved in that. And then we'll, we'll probably, yeah, discuss it in some of the civics classes as well and see how that goes.
Another idea, Director Larson, is the the leadership class. Like we all receive cards from, is it a Steeble class?
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, so that might be another great group of students who might be very interested in being able to advocate.
Yeah, I'm actually part of the leadership class. And yeah, I'm, and I'm pretty sure our leadership class will be more than interested in, like, getting involved and getting their voices heard as well.
And, you know, I I guess the other thing I would point out, this is just one little opportunity. I mean, there's other places. So for example, last time Samuel, I mentioned, you know, if you're interested, there's a whole group of school, student representatives on school boards at the state level that get together on a on a regular basis. And if you're interested in that, I can connect you up with the person that organizes that. And they have an ongoing, you know, relationship with the legislature and do various projects. So that's another, I can, I'll put, actually, I'll, when I send you the email with the times, I'll put the contact information for that person in there. And you can, if you want to follow up on that, you're welcome to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Larson.
You're welcome. Okay, so the rest of the legislative report, there is one issue that I, so I'm on the the WASTA School Directors Association Legislative Committee this year, which turns out, just for people's information, in case you are interested in that in the future, to be a lot of work. We start out with a 10, 10 hours Zoom meeting and we have meetings every week and lots of emails going back and forth. But the good thing is it allows connections to into the legislative process that, you know, wouldn't normally have. And so one of the issues that I, through some research about CTE, was surfaced, was it turns out in the funding formulas that the allocation to school districts for nurses, social workers, counselors, psychologists, or students that are CTE students that have, are taking CTE classes, it turns out is less than for everybody else. And I did a lot of research to, you know, with OSPI, with the Governor's Office, to try and find out why in the world is that true? And nobody can really, other than it's the law, it's written in the budget language. And there appears to be no good reason for that. I can't imagine why, you know, a person who's a CT student would have less access to a counselor or a social worker or anything. So anyway, I'm working that issue through through Washington. They're going to be contacting some of the legislators. It's, so it's an interesting issue. I just bring that one up. So that one, I'm working fairly heavily. The other thing that was interesting, last, I think, a week ago Sunday in the Seattle Times, there was an opinion piece about education funding written by a relatively new professor at the University of Washington School of Education. His name is David Knight, and he wrote a really good article about the inequities in the education system, which is an issue that's been on for quite some time. So I contacted him, we're going to actually chat tomorrow about what his work is. And he's relatively new at the UW. I think he's come up from Texas. And so anyway, I'm always interested in anybody who's working in the education finance field and inequities. And so anyway, there is potential for that to kind of do some collaboration with him and and the WASTA Legislative Committee. Because what he's, one of the big things he was advocating for was considerably more money going to the Learning Assistance Program, which is the program the state funds based on the free and reduced lunch or the poverty rates in a district. So that's one, you know, I'm really interested in that one, which would be very beneficial. So anyway, I'm going to do that. Let's see, and I've attached to the agenda item a bunch of, I won't go through all the bills there, but there's, there's a whole bunch of bills. I wanted to just talk a little bit about, Director Apo Rider asked about, it's about halfway down, Senate Bill 5335. Yeah, so that was the one, it's related to asynchronous learning. So it's an interesting little bill because it was brought to the attention of Senator Dingra, who is the senator from the Redmond area, which is where the Lake Washington School District is. And it was brought by students from the Lake Washington School District. So there's another opportunity for students, if they want to, you know, have an idea about something, they can, we can pursue it with our legislators, they can pursue it with our legislators. And sometimes it it will result in bills being introduced. This particular bill calls for districts to be able to have up to 20% of instructional hours be asynchronous. I think, you know, this bill is probably not going to go anywhere this year because it's not totally well-vetted. The concept is really good. I mean, the idea is to increase flexibility in in the educational experience. And, you know, this would be allow maybe one day a week of, you know, time where you could do, it wouldn't be, you know, the synchronous model of in school every every day. A lot of what they're talking about here is kind of hybrid schools, rotating schools, which a lot of people have argued you can do within the current model, you don't need it. So this, this, my assessment is this bill needs a little more vetting as it goes through. But it's an interesting one to look at and it'll be interesting to see how it's, it moves through the legislature. A couple of the other, the the ones that I'm really tracking really closely are the two at the top. The, these are the bills related to funding allocations for nurses, social workers, counselors, psychologists. And the fact that both those bills lack the equity component. So in other words, it's the same allocation for everyone. This year, there's a lot of emphasis for obvious reasons on nurses. And so it's pretty certain, I think, that the legislature will allocate more nurses to schools. However, it still won't be up to, you know, even the level of one per, you know, it was an extremely low level currently. And, you know, it's not, I mean, they'll bump it up a little bit, but not totally. There was an interesting, you know, if you like to follow legislative game playing, there was an interesting bill that was introduced as part of this by one of the Republican legislators that calls for one nurse and one counselor at every school. The interesting thing about that, there was no way to fund it. So it was completely unfunded mandate, which is, you know, not going to fly for school districts. It just, it was more of a, I think it's more a performative kind of thing than anything else. It's, it was interesting when I went through the the House Education Committee, half the Democrats voted for it and half the Republicans voted for it and the other half didn't. The Democrats who voted for it all said, well, you know, we we believe in the concept, but of course, it's not going to pass muster when it goes to the next committee, which is appropriations, which is the money committee, and they got to work out of the money issues. So anyway, it was an interesting thing to watch in terms of how the legislature works on some of these issues. But let's see, there was the last two on the bottom there, HB 1807 and HB 1886 are interesting. These are one that we kind of expected. They're related to, you know, critical race theory, what is taught in civics classes and those kinds of things. They're all introduced by Republicans and have no, no Democratic cosponsors. So these bills, I'm sure, will not go anywhere this year. But, you know, the you know, the, the one eighteen oh seven is kind of interesting to look at because, it talks about, you know, it specifies a lot of curriculum that should be taught in schools and, you know, curriculum, that's the bailiwick of local school districts to divide curriculum, so, like I said, I don't think these are going anywhere, but they're interesting to, to look at. Another one, another one that was interesting was the one, three up from the bottom, fifty-seven thirty-four, the Senate. And this is a, a nod toward trying to get more, kind of, mental health kinds of courses into the curriculum, so the, the current graduation requirements calls for half a credit, in health and one point five credits in fitness, and they want to switch it to, essentially, one in health and one in fitness, which gives a little more room for mental health to be introduced into the, into the system. That was another one that was brought forward by some students at the Lake Washington School District, so that's, it'll be interesting to see how that one goes through. And I think, it's probably all the ones I'll talk about, there, oh, there is one other one that's, I didn't add, I just found about it, well, a couple of them found out about today. One is House Bill twenty-seventy-eight, which will, would essentially provide funding for outdoor schools for fifth and sixth graders, so, you know, we've been, that's one that would be of great interest to us, the, the focus or the, a lot of people are getting interested in outdoor schools, and so, if we could get that funded from the state, that would be really nice, we'll see how that one goes. And then the other one is, is House Bill eleven fifty-three, which is language access, which, that's kind of right in line with a lot of the things that I think Director Pro Ryder's been talking about, about how we, it's, it's, the way it's written now, it's, it's kind of about OSPI and a work group getting together to figure out how to do it. I mean, we're doing a lot of things in our district in this area, so, I think we're probably ahead of the curve on this one, but, anyway, it would be, it's, the focus on it is, is pretty good, so I think, that means the state will have more focus on it, which means there may be dollars coming with it and so forth, so. Anyway, that's all I got, I, yeah, take some time, and if anybody, maybe go around, anybody wanna make any questions, comments, thoughts? I'm seeing one shaking no head. Director, yeah. Nobody, okay.
Yeah, thank you, Director Larson. I will move along to the next item, which is our approval of our, can we go up a little bit? Thank you, so approval of the consent agenda, may I get a motion?
Motion?
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
And we'll move along down to the question only presentation, so, why don't we go ahead and start with, Presentation A, any questions, anything need to be talked about there? All right. Enrollment Report. Monthly Budget Status Report for November and December. I, so thank you to district administrators for answering all our questions ahead of time, and so our questions, I do believe, will be posted. Well, I don't, do not see anything for presentations, so we'll move along to action items. First item is Approval of Human Service Staffing Report, may I get a motion of approval?
So move.
Any discussion?
I just want to recognize, I guess, our new, it looks like our new Director of Athletics will be a former foster high school graduate, so, welcome back.
All right, all in favor?
I.
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 I, okay, any opposed, because I think I heard maybe three, three? All right, we'll move along to Approval of Overnight Field Trip for State Cheerleading Championships, may I get a motion of approval?
So move.
A second. Discussion.
I guess I just wanted to clarify the, the funding, I got a budget code here, is this coming from the ASP? Fund, I was, I was just not necessarily the budget code, but just, which fund, is it general fund, ASP?
It's the General Fund Athletics Budget.
Oh, the athletics budget, okay.
I have the same response to this as I do to athletics in general, I love them, I see the value. I'm not sure this is the time and place to be sending our teens off into a, close proximity with other kids. I, I don't know if you all saw the Seattle Times report about how, the classroom does seem to be a safe place for kids, but the athletic fields and the extracurricular sports, has proven that it's not as safe, at least that's the, that's the read I had on that article. And so I, I have my hesitations on this, I would hate to have them miss it because it is a very cool thing, but, if we're barely able to send them back to school, I'm not sure, I think we should be sending them to mix with other schools. That's just, that's my hesitation.
Do we have any cheer athletes or any, like a little bit of background? I, if they're part of the cheerleading championships, I'm interested in learning a little bit more about maybe, what led to that and what are the student perspectives?
I don't know if we have any here, but just like any of the other extracurricular activities, the, cheer does have a competition, just like all of the other sports and activities, WIA is, Washington Interscholastic Athletics and Activities, so there is a competition to get to the state level, which means, they have been competing throughout this season. And of course, any students who wouldn't feel comfortable going, they don't have to go, so, I know that, just like any of the other activities, this is something that they've been looking forward to, raising money towards, to support all that, so. They, you know, that, any of the students who have been participating, like, they, I realized that there are some, some challenges with it, and, you know, I read that same report, and, again, the, the transmission level is certainly possible, but they are testing three times a week, so, we are trying to get them in there, and then when they're not competing, they should be wearing their masks, which are all the processes that they should be going through.
I think, um, I feel like we should still go through with them competing, because as a student, from a student perspective, like our cheer team, like they've worked super hard, like, 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 they're literally practicing every day as well as, like, they've, like, competed in multiple tournaments to qualify for the state level, but I feel like we should just, like, continue testing and make sure there's like a mask mandate in play. And yeah, that's what I feel like, that's my opinion.
I guess the, the only question that I asked and the answer was information to be provided, but, I just want to make sure that the, the health protocols that are, are in place are, you know, good ones, I mean, I did read earlier about a, I think there was a wrestling tournament earlier that, you know, was not well-pleased, and so, that resulted in problems, but, yeah, I mean, I just wanted, would want to make sure that, you know, if students going over there, I know that, I mean, the cheer squad, I've seen them a couple of football games, they're really good, and they deserve to get, some statewide recognition, I just want to make sure that they're, the health protocols in place are in fact solid.
Yeah, I think students and staff who are supervising are made clear about what those health protocols are. The place where they're staying obviously has that in place, and during the competition, WIA makes sure, ensures that they're following, that as well, so, they, you know, it's just, you know, individuals have to follow through, with those pieces as well. So I think the protocols are clear on them leaving, and there should be appropriate supervision to make sure that they, follow through with those protocols. We also made sure there were enough rooms and we weren't tripling them up or quadrupling them up into a room, so there's, I think they're sharing rooms, I think it's just two individuals or two, two people per room.
I support this one hundred percent, I think I also want to second what has already been shared about the, the COVID-related concerns. The, the wrestling tournament that the Director Larson just spoke to, I mean, that was, that was significant in our region and had a lot of impacts. I know folks who have been impacted by the transmission that happened at that tournament, and so, it's not, it's not insignificant, the transmission that's happening there, and so I, like, a question that I would ask is, you know, what's the procedure if someone starts experiencing symptoms when they're in battleground? What happens then? Where does that young person go? What's the protocol for that? How will they be isolated and also still cared for? I think another concern that I have, just generally speaking, when we think about, like, tests are amazing and it's great that we can test three times a week or test regularly, and, what we know about COVID is that I could test negative this morning and be, be transmitting the virus later on in the afternoon, so, a test is not a fail-safe, and, you know, we had this conversation last week around the use of masks in, during workouts in the weight room, and the response was, well, they're getting tested, so they can go without their masks, I know we worked around that, that's not where we ended up. But the idea is like, I don't want there to be, I don't want to send these folks off and say, oh, they're getting tested, so we, you know, we don't really have to pay, super attention to making sure that we're enforcing masks and all of those things, and then again, I would still want to know, you know, what is the plan if someone does develop symptoms while they're there?
Yeah, I think I agree with you, you know, I don't want the protocols to be lax at all, they need to be followed and, and supported. For the competitions, I believe, I don't have that for sure, but just like in our schools, there are medical staff on hand for these competitions, and if there are symptoms, they'd be tested, there would be an isolation place for them and observed, and then if they're, usually their location is pretty close to a medical facility, I don't know exactly how close the closest hospital is, but, if that needed to happen, but medical staff who are on hand for these competitions, they're usually EMTs also for each of these competitions, we have them for our athletic competitions too close by, especially for football, but, at state level competitions, there are medical personnel at the, at the side of the competition.
Yeah, I think more, more what I meant by that question is, so they're, they're going down in a bus, correct? And then they're staying in rooms together with two folks, and so if someone were to test positive, for instance, while they were there, they would still have to get on the bus with a bus full of other students in close proximity to get home. So that's more what I mean, like, how are we navigating that if something happens, in battleground, what's the plan to get those folks home and not put everybody else on the bus at risk?
Yeah, I think we would, be able to coordinate alternate trans, transportation for them to get back, so they wouldn't be on the bus crowded with everybody else.
I imagine that would be valuable to have in place beforehand, so that parents were aware of what that additional protocol would be, so that they can also make a plan.
Yeah, absolutely, and this date is February fourth and fifth, so we'll make sure that's in place before they leave.
I need again, anything else? There's been a motion and a second, so we'll go ahead and take a, a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any, any opposed? All right, we'll move along, so eight C has been postponed for a following, a following board meeting. So we'll go ahead and move along to item nine, recognition.
Well, so January is the annual Board Appreciation Month. Normally, if we were gathering in person, and I know for Director Hoover, you, you haven't been present at any of the previous ones, but normally we'd be there, we'd have a certificate of appreciation, small celebration where we could kind of, take a pause from the, from the meeting and have some refreshments and, and just recognize folks. I just want to say how much I really appreciate everything that this particular board does, I think you're, to each and every one of you, you're extremely conscientious about what it is, you're trying to do, who you serve, reflecting that back with the community, and, it is really a privilege to continue to work with you, and just see how the board continues to grow, and I think there has been a lot of, growth amongst and between board members and us in, in general, trying to, align what it is we're trying to accomplish, not just as a board and superintendent team, but as a district in general. We're obviously not all the way there, we have a lot of work still to do, but I think from, what's been progressing over the years, we're, we're taking steps in the right direction, and I just really appreciate each and every one of you. And I know other staff do as well, as we continue to listen, hear back, reflect that back and demonstrate that to our students, our staff and our community, so, I just want to really say thank you so much, and if there was anything else, any board members want to say or recognize each other, now would be a good time to be able to do that.
I think we should raise a glass to one another.
I've got tea in mine as well.
Here, here.
I know we had a chance to talk a little bit at our board retreat, but I just want to acknowledge that, we can't do any of this, a very important work on our own, and that we need each other, and, and just, I just want to thank everybody and honor, and I'm looking forward to continuing to learn and grow with you and as we serve our community. Anything else before we move along to executive session? So in a moment, we will, go ahead and clear public attendees and everyone but the Board of Directors, in order to have an executive session to review the performance of public employees, specifically Dr. Herndon. Before we do so, I just really quick want to check, get a bit of a pulse check to see, are we up for that this evening, is this something that you feel ready and able to do, or, any suggestion, any recommendations of pausing and doing it at an upcoming meeting? I feel ready, but I want to check, it's been a long day.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Let's do it.
All right, consensus by silence. Okay, all right, so let's do it, well, we're gonna do this thing, all right, so, we're gonna go ahead and is Dr. Herndon or Debbie, please help me, and in terms of, is there anything specific I need to say? Is there anything that needs to happen before we stop the? Is there anything that needs to happen before we stop the the recording?
Normally, you can give an estimated time on when the board will come back to adjourn the meeting. So you would give an estimated timeframe.
And specifically, Bridget, you want to say we're recessing the regular board meeting to executive session at this time for approximately however long and the reason why?
Okay, so I'll have to, it's helpful to have visuals, but okay, we're recessing our meeting at this time. We will, oh, for executive session, we will reserve, we will resume for adjournment and approximately. And I'm going to just say forty-five to one hour, forty-five minutes to one hour. Is there anything else, Debbie? Did I do okay?
It's to review the performance of a public employee per RCW forty-two thirty-one ten G.
Okay, so that's, that's what we'll do. So to review the performance of a public employee per RCW forty-two point thirty, thirty point one ten G.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody who's in attendance. Thank you for listening in and continue to feel free to reach out to us, any of us, and share input and feedback.
I'm waiting for the rest of the attendees to clear. Dr. Herndon, I will transfer hosts to you. And please make sure you stop the recording and then turn it back on once you come back into adjourn, come back into regular session.
And I see Samuel is also still on. So is, is he also excused from an executive session?
Yes.
Samuel, thank you for your input tonight. We will see you soon.
All right. I think I have it. Do you mind if we pause just to take a bio break?
Yes, yes, definitely. So is it all right if we come back together? Is seven minutes enough or do we want more time?
Seven minutes is fine for me.
Okay, so eight thirty and then Dr. Herndon. Real quick, just, you know, legit, actually, feel free to take your break. I just want to know, are you going to be part of this discussion tonight?
Typically, for the mid-year review, I have been, so we go over kind of the document that I sent out and we just kind of check in on how things are there.
Okay, thank you. See you all in about five minutes, seven minutes.
All right, the recording is on.
All right, so we're back in public session and I will take a motion to adjourn this evening. All in favor?
Yes. I.
All right. Good night, everybody. We'll, we'll cross paths on Friday, it looks like, Thursday and Friday, right, for the classes?
Everybody.